Okay, public comment? Not seeing any. We will move on to the superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's pass these out. I'm just gonna make comments on a couple of the items and if people can take a look themselves. Again, you know, I thank you Catherine for making the comment about the tragedy from Connecticut. I think as a parent and as an educator it really was really unbelievably difficult to hear and to even make any sense of. And I think it's one of the few times that I've actually found so many people incredibly sad but also find no words to really even engage in a conversation about something that's just really unimaginable. So, I do want to just share with the committee and also with the community that, you know, we are in our school district, again, we take safety of our children very seriously and we've been fortunate to have really positive relationships with the town of Amherst, the police department, fire department, the state police, UMass, Amherst College. We've had a really longstanding, I'd say probably about eight or nine years, and we've really focused on our safety planning and crisis response work and we've collaboratively created routines and we've practiced those routines regularly. So whenever we're in the midst of a situation where we have to be kind of reflective on what we have in place currently, which, you know, we took the opportunity to do that this week. Clearly, much information went out to families and to staff because we are not only concerned about the safety protocols for our children but also to be thoughtful of how our staff might be responding, the stress level, just considering something like this could occur. And then also to be able to provide information for families of how they can speak to their children because again, I think we all struggle, or at least I can speak for myself, it is a struggle to consider how to talk to your children about this topic in a way that's developmentally appropriate. So we've been sharing a bit of information with all of our staff, families, and students where appropriate. We've also met this week with our police chief, fire chief, police and fire staff, as well as our central office administrators to look at our safety plans again. We have tightened up some areas this week in response to just really thinking through, you know, door buzzer systems and such and parents will be getting additional information that kind of clarifies and explains why we might be doing something a little bit different. Also after-school access to buildings for our after-school programs. We also are, you know, taking the time to really look through each of our protocols. We, I don't know if I showed this last year, but a year and a half ago at the same time where we locked our doors, we do have a flip chart which is in every one of our classrooms which helps all of us to respond when these challenging situations come up. So we're taking the opportunity to revisit all of the procedures we have in place, you know, thoughtfully. Also, I did want to mention, you know, I feel very fortunate that when we're engaged in these challenging conversations and situations, our partners step up to help out. We received an email right away from UMass Psychological Services, Sarah Whitcomb, Chris Overtree, and others, offering their supports and services. So what they are doing and offering for us is they're making available to parents and guardians who might be struggling with the event themselves, or how to support their children. They're offering sessions on December 19th and December 20th from 8:45 to 9:45 in the professional development center at the middle school. And this is, you know, a free service where people are going to be there to help our families out. They're also offering opportunities for our staff as well. So again, we take the opportunity to reflect on what we have in place and we are taking some concrete steps to be responsive to the people who we are responsible for.
Can I, I'm sorry. Of course. I just wanted to, while we're talking about the UMass Psychological Services and these available free meetings, UMass Psychological Services also has, on an ongoing basis, individual and family services at a very reduced rate, you know, sliding fee for the entire community. So that's also an available resource.
And I believe they are going to, thank you, I believe they're also going to offer a couple additional free sessions for families as well, specific to this event. I also did just wanted to mention that, you know, I know that the select board also wrote a letter extending their condolences and support to the community in Connecticut. And we also, from the school's perspective, on the day of the event, did reach out to the person who is the executive director of the Connecticut Superintendent's Group, who forwarded information to the superintendent from Newtown. Just to offer, we're not that far away. If we, if there's something that we could do to support, we would absolutely be there. So these are the times where we do all pull together to support each other. I also just wanted to mention that on Friday I'll be having a segment on Amherst Media. We'll be taping a segment with John Musanti, myself, representatives of the police department, fire department, and our administrative staff where we will be talking about our safety procedures. It'll be an hour segment versus the 30-minute segment, which is typical, just so that information can get out to families and to the communities so people can see what we already have in place and what we're working on and how we partner together. And also, we're in the midst of creating public service announcements around bus safety and pedestrian safety because again, we have had some, we had an accident, is it a week ago now, a week and a half ago now, so that we really want to remind the community about the requirements around pedestrians, which we are very much a walking community here. So we need to not only connect it to our buses but also to just general pedestrians in our community. So we are doing some public service announcements with the police as well that should be coming out shortly. And on our website, and on the website, I believe, for the police department, Scott Livingstone, who's the police chief, and I put out a joint statement around school bus safety. So that information is up with some simple steps for people who are driving on the roads and some of the requirements related to school buses specifically. So again, we're trying to get information out there to help our community to not only deal with tragedy but also to just really be thoughtful around the safety of our children. I think that the remainder of the items for tonight, I'm gonna just have people take a look at, there are some events that have been happening at Crowe Farm, Fort River, Wildwood, and some of our district items, but I think I'll just stick to this topic for tonight, if that works for the committee.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any questions? So moving on, Rob, we're gonna have a presentation, Rob.
I'll make a brief and Rob will come on up and talk with us. You know, as, I think everyone was there at the regional meeting when we talked about. So again, this is just the very preliminary look at our FY14 level services budget, which is rolling over our current budget, also recognizing some known costs. And we begin to kind of get a sense of, in some years it's where our surplus and other years where it's our gap. And we recognize that this will change multiple times over the course of the year, but this starts our internal work, looking at enrollment trends and any reductions that can be made regarding enrollment, also looking at programmatic adjustments. And we have not included misinformation ads or any cuts at this point, so we will be over the next month, before we come back in front of you, do that work. And we'll come back at our next meeting, which is, if I can remember when that one, is January 15th, I believe. And we will have specific add and cut information for you to review. So Rob is gonna kind of walk us through the very, very, very preliminary information. So Rob? Do we have, I have, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Not keeping up.
So as Maria was saying, this is preliminary information, this is kind of where we start the budget process. We take what we're doing now, or more accurately, October, and roll it forward to next year, changing what we know or anticipate to carry forward next year. So, let me run quickly through this. Salaries are scheduled to increase $147,000. That does not include any raises. That is just reflective of some positions that were added this year since the budget was passed, okay? And some comings and goings and changes in overall staffing patterns. Special education is an increase of $103,000 and that is in tuition for out-of-district placements. That would not be a surprise to you because in the first quarter report, you saw that we had an increase this year already, which carries forward to next year as well. Other programs, the increase of $99,000 has to do with choice and charter tuitions, okay? And at the time we wrote this, charter assessments were, we were looking at an increase of 117 and a decrease in choice tuition of $18,000. Now, caveat, we do not have, or just, just within the last hour, received our charter data for this year, which now we can use to better project for next year. Choice is what it is because the town pays that bill and we reimburse them two years later, so we know what that number is. That's a solid number. Program and staff development, an increase of $26,000 is mostly for instructional supplies. And you'll see right below that, a decrease of $12,000 to school administration. That decrease is a combination of reduction in the cost of maintenance for our copying machines because of some switches we did this year, and a decrease of $6,000 for supplies, which are now re-categorized in other areas, if you will, okay? Utilities, going down $27,000 projected. We locked in a good gas contract this year for the next three years, so you saw that in the region as well, and it's playing out there nicely. Transportation, we project going up $22,000 and that's based on a percentage increase for the contract as well as changes in the routes for our kids, so the mileage changes and we allocate costs based on mileage. Again, a small number. Food services, we want to reduce by $30,000 next year because we have worked hard in the last couple of years to reduce costs in that area and have been successful in the Amherst schools, so we're feeling good about that. Risk and benefits, the increase of $198,000 is mostly attributable to retiree benefits. Folks who will be retired into this year, have retirement incentives and sick leave buyback to be paid out, that looks to be about $150,000 of it. There's an increase in retiree group insurance because of some adjustments, there's a reduction, an offsetting reduction in health insurance for employees. So overall, that area is, looks to be going up $199. And the control accounts is where we have a provision for unanticipated or unknowable expenses. So in that contingency bucket, if you will, there's a provision for professional leave, there's a provision for salary adjustments once the contract is settled, there's a provision for staffing contingency and so forth. So that brings us to an estimated increase of 1.1 million. Now, the Amherst Finance Committee has given us guidance that they want to see a 2% increase from the schools, which would be $341,000. So we have a funding gap at this moment of $713,000, call it, which Maria and staff have been working on diligently for over a month. And I'll let the superintendent give you an initial general update because we're still working on that and we'll see some further to report when we meet again in January. But before you do that, actually, so any questions as to what I'm looking at for level services or just a projection?
Shavas?
So my very simplistic way of looking at things is to key in on where the largest increase, percentage increases are, and so we see special education is the number one, one to focus on, and then after that, program and staff development. And I'm not altogether clear on the control accounts and that huge negative number there, but basically spotlighting on those two, is that a way to sort of begin to decipher what's driving the funding gap?
The percentages, no, I wouldn't say that's a good way of looking at it. I think if you look at the increase itself in special education of $103,000, $104,000, certainly is a portion of the 1.1 million. That's 39, 38% is just because it's smaller numbers. You know, you can go down to risk and benefits, going up $198,000, but it's only a 5% increase because it's a much larger number. So I think it'd be better served to look at the raw increase in special education, that is, not additional tuition. You have a page two on your hand out there? And we get reimbursed from the state through a mechanism called Circuit Breaker for large expenses for special education kids, okay? And I won't get into the formula now, but what I will show you here on this page is, okay, the first column, Circuit Breaker, we received in FY13, $215,000. So we will apply that to the budget, FY14 budget. Now, what we're looking at, a total tuition of $395,000 next year, so if you apply $215 of Circuit Breaker funding towards that, we're left with funding $179,000 out of this appropriation budget. So why is it going up? And it looks to be going up from $196 to $260, from 12 to 13, and from $260 to $395 in FY14?
Two children.
Children's needs.
Two children.
Yeah. Yeah, they happen to be high-ticket placements this time. It doesn't always jump this much.
Day placements are approximately, I'd say $60,000 up, you know, that's a modest cost for a day placement and that doesn't include transportation. And residential placements can be anywhere around $100 to $200-plus thousand dollars per student.
And let me, let me go back to what the control accounts are. So that's provisions for anticipated obligations. So of that, 623, $30,000 off the top is contractually are obligated to provide the opportunity for sabbatical. And we put in $30,000 into the budget to support that, should one be necessary, or should one be granted. If it is, then that would support the replacement person up in the salary lines. If it isn't granted, then that is, either can be removed from the budget or can be used for other purposes, okay? The big piece in there is a contingency for steps and colas that could result from contract negotiations. Since we don't know how that's gonna settle, we in good faith put an amount in here that should be in the ballpark of where we hope to settle, so it's available for those salary increases.
We also typically have a teacher and two paraprofessionals back in the contingency as well for unanticipated needs for children who might enter the district or have a level of need.
Right.
As well as things like specific leaves that teachers may take or degree changes and such.
Rob?
And just further explanation for Amecar, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but the reason you see such a high negative percentage number there is that previous budgeted amounts for control accounts were much higher and then when the money was taken out of them and used, they went down to the thousand and the zero.
Thank you, he's exactly right. And as it would have it, it ended up being a negative number because there are some cuts that were budgeted that were not identified. And so that negative number drives it being a negative whopping percent instead of a positive whopping percent. It's, I should have taken that out, it's just one of those mathematical flukes that happened.
Rick.
Well, it was partly to ask about the control accounts, but the bottom line kind of is it's hard to tell which of these line items are driving things because of stuff in the control accounts that haven't been flowed up yet, but mainly where it's flowing to is the salary line. So I just don't think that the salary line's really 1%, it's gonna be more than that.
No, 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 no.
So, and the only other thing I wanted, excuse me, asked is if we can ask us, the two kids, were they already in the district or did they come in?
No, I'm not sure. I can find out that information. But again, kids' needs change based on circumstances and situations and it's one of those things that are difficult to anticipate. We also, if I can, say that we have not added at this point any revenue from choice. We have currently 34 students who are in our schools by school choice, which will, once we kind of get that information settled, we'll know what our placeholder will be to apply, which at a minimum, $150,000.
So that 712 will drop.
By 150, a minimum.
By 150 or so.
Yep. Thanks, no problem.
Thank you.
That's why we're both here.
And a lot of other work you've done. You've done a lot of other work as well.
Yes, yes.
Are there other questions?
Sorry. No, and just, I think what I've said to the committee prior is that we start to look at enrollments and we look at class sizes and we stay within the parameters of the school committee, but we will, if where possible, make reductions in classrooms and we will also look at what it takes to run a school, how many sections are needed of different staff, and we'll start to do, to look at that. And we'll also look at different programmatic adjustments. Are we changing our model of who is responsible for what, you know, role in the district? So that will start to flesh out, and it's already started to at this, at this point. And then so when we come back in front of you in a month's time, we'll have a sense of where we're able to realize reductions because of enrollments and where we are actually making cuts. But our goal, of course, is to have less effect on what children are actually receiving or benefiting from and to make reductions that they will not, that will not impact their educational experience.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. We'll see you in a month and...
And we look forward to seeing you in a month, I hope with somewhat better numbers.
We hope so, but, thank you, Rob.
So Maria, you're going to talk about the Massachusetts School Building Authority?
Yeah, actually, I don't know if Rob wants to mention anything related to this either, but I'll pass it out. And basically, I, you know, I came in front of the committee, I think it was it, when was it? It was spring of, last spring, I believe? And the MSBA has opportunities for people to apply for funds, which are funds that we use for the window replacement at the middle school and such, and they have criteria. And our schools are kind of identified as, you know, being highly eligible based on the conditions of the buildings or less so. This year, we applied to have renovations for Wildwood and Fort River, and unfortunately, we did not receive the funds to renovate those two buildings. However, having a follow-up conversation, Ron Bahanowicz spoke with, I'm not sure if it's the person who indicated on this, this letter, or just spoke to a person at MSBA, and they kind of said there were a couple places that we really should stress the need for these renovations, which first are for educational benefit of having an open-air classroom where the sound and the impact on the educational, the quality of the educational experience for students and our concerns around just the configuration of where the bathrooms are situated, kids having to walk through other classrooms to access. So we're really gonna spend more time talking about the educational impact of the renovation versus just kind of upgrading or updating. And then also, there has been some information kind of going around, around, you know, also some of our safety protocols and having open classrooms and what does that mean for routines and such. So we're gonna look at any of those items that would be relevant to complete this application, which I believe another's coming out in January, so I think the timeline was something like March submission. But I did want to just say to the committee and to the community that we are committed to looking at the interior structure of, structure of both buildings and recognizing that there are many children who really benefit from having more of enclosed classroom space versus the partial walls that we have currently in Wildwood and Fort River. And in addition to the partial walls, just that schools really have evolved over time and the amount, the types of spaces that you need for service delivery now is really different than what it was. When was the building built, 1960s? It looks like 1960s to me, but I don't know.
It was early 70s.
Oh, there you go, early 70s. So what we would want to see now in a school is very different from what's currently in place. So there's a lack of efficient use of space as well as just the open-air classroom. So unfortunately, we did not get this round, but we are going to work on it with a slightly different perspective for the next submission.
Maria, and will you be applying for both buildings in the, is it sort of the same application, given that?
Are they too separate, Rob? I have to ask Rob because I have it. Too separate. But the footprint of the buildings are exactly the same, so what the body of the applications will be very similar. I can't remember if they classified one differently than the other, but we will go for both and we'll be fortunate if we get one, but we are gonna continue to try to, to receive funds to renovate.
Words?
So do you have any sense, if we put in for two, that there's a greater likelihood of?
I don't have a sense of that, so I can't speak to it one way or another. I know that years ago, when we were applying, when they were doing the rating of the buildings, our buildings are actually in fairly good shape compared to many of the school buildings in Massachusetts, so we're not considered a high priority from the facility aspect. That's why I think educational focus is where we have a much greater chance of actually being awarded some funds. So we're gonna keep looking at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Other questions? Thank you. So it's nice to know that it's coming around again fairly soon.
Yes, yes it is. And Ron Bahanowicz has, you know, worked diligently on this process and will ask for additional help this time with really around the educational language.
Right.
But we will do that. You're welcome.
Wow, moving right along.
Yes.
We have gifts to accept. Yep, front and back, yes. Let somebody...
I'll do it.
Thank you. Rob? Rob?
Me? No, you weren't looking, sorry.
I thought I heard him.
I moved to accept a gift from James and Rebecca Chambers to the Wildwood Library for girls in sports books for a total of $125. A gift from Baxter, is that a company, Baxter?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. To the Betty Yaffe Art Scholarship Fund for a total of $70 and a gift from Peter Weitzman and Diane Travis to the Betty Yaffe Art Scholarship Fund for $50.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. So I thought I would do a very brief update on the Regional School District Planning Board, since we had one very recently and not a lot has changed, except that, we did have a meeting on December 12th. And I think that you heard at our last regional meeting that we did get the DESI grant at some reduction, but, you know, that was very good news in terms of moving forward with our consultants. And so we had a meeting on the 12th of the board and we talked about the timeline more specifically. So the consultants will meet, we will have a public forum with the consultants presenting their reports, the educational consultant and the financial consultant, on Saturday, February 3rd in the afternoon, thinking that families would have sports things in the morning. That would be from 1:00 to 3:00 on February 3rd to hear the consultants' reports. Following that public forum, each town will have its own individual public forum sometime in February. So, and those dates haven't been chosen yet, as far as I know. yet, as far as I know.
Is the location of that?
Oh, I think if we decided that it was going to be at the middle school.
I want to say it was the middle school auditorium. I will have to, do you remember, Debbie?
That's where they're working on. One question was whether we would be able to do the live broadcasting. That's still overlooked in the end.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll let you know. And also, we'll keep you updated in terms of the public forum for Amherst because one of the things that the board is concerned about is making sure that we have as much public input as possible at this early stage because the board is going to vote and make their recommendation in March. And each town, I know, is very interested in having the community involved. And that's not always an easy thing to do. So, we're still working on ways to get the word out about the public forums. So, any ideas, suggestions, help would be appreciated. And, yep, Maria?
We should mention the four-town meeting date again, too, just because we have, we have a bit of a break. And then we have a regional meeting on January 8th, and then we have a four-town meeting on January 12th.
Saturday, January 12th.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's, Rob, the time is 9:00?
9:00.
9:00 to 11:00?
I don't have it down in front of me, but usually it's on the left.
Okay. And that will be really talking with, sharing with the towns, kind of our fiscal reality and hearing theirs so that we can begin the budget conversation.
Right, thank you.
And then our, do you want me to go to our?
Sure.
What we have scheduled for our next meeting in Amherst is January 15th. And we have a comprehensive budget presentation. So, that is the whole, the book, the spending plan, where you'll have all of the revenue and expenditures, and you'll have the adds and cuts. So, we'll be doing a fairly lengthy presentation. We should have a discussion around school choice at that point and class size in general. And then if there's a need for a sabbatical vote, that would happen that night as well. So, that will be primarily a financial meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, that's looking at the calendar, much like the regional committee. You know, as you can see, the calendar is pretty full. So, when I think about items for future agendas, I, if, it would be hard pressed to add to our current agendas, but if there's something that any of you feel is absolutely pressing, we should bring it up. Rick?
Not absolutely pressing, but three things come to mind. One is at the last meeting, we're going to have an update on the Spanish program. We canceled that, so that would be something to.
Yeah.
Then two other things. One is to look, maybe after the Budget Subcommittee looks into it further, but look at the per pupil cost thing. Because the report that we got, the way I read it, it was mostly the ratio, the teacher to student ratio and per pupil to student ratio. So, maybe we could look at that at a meeting somewhere in the future. And I thought that was the third.
I think after-school is one that I had on the list, too, the after-school programs. I had after-school Spanish, and then I think PBIS discipline was going to be the larger. And I wrote the per pupil.
So, I have to imagine that Spanish and per pupil cost is going to be embedded in the budget discussion. But after-school and PBIS, I would, I would also be interested in hearing about. Maybe we can push that a little bit beyond our budget.
I think we're going to have to, to tell you the truth.
But, so, we are scheduled, let's see.
Because we do have a January, on January 22nd, we have a teaching and learning update, special education report, student services report, and then my mid-cycle goals. So, that, those are kind of the, which maybe we can update a little bit on PBIS or some of those in there as well.
And maybe February 26th, we have a second quarter update and a vote, budget vote, but we may be able to.
Yeah.
Talk about.
We might be able to get something else in there.
After-school, maybe.
Okay.
Anything, Shabazz?
What was the date expressed for when the public forum would be held with the education and financial consultants?
February 3rd.
If it's a Saturday.
February 2nd. I apologize. February 2nd, Saturday, February 2nd.
Do you think some of those particular dates might get on the arts.org calendar, particularly the February 2nd and then in, and then in December, in January, the one that was mentioned for?
The four-town?
Yeah, I think the reason, I, it will be up there. Andy Steinberg is just making absolutely certain that one of the consultants can make it on that date. I think it's like 90% sure.
As they get firmed up, if they can just be put there on the calendar. And the other thing that occurred, and this is just something to maybe think about down the line, along the same line of the web, is what do we have in terms of crisis response procedures on the web that community, particularly in these kinds of moments, that want to check in and see what happens if something like this happens, you know, that there's something there that maybe explains what are some of the procedures. I received my child bringing home the note on pickup, after-school pickup procedures and doors being locked. And it was, again, very informative and very assuring to have that kind of feedback coming, you know, from the schools. But if we also kind of back it up on the, on the web, because I just think people will turn to the web when they're, when they're in doubt.
Thank you. That's very good. Anything else? Any other comments? Well, I have to think, I think that's a record.
We had a meeting before, so that kind of counts.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Want to adjourn?
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Wow.